Okay. Good evening, everybody. We are late, but we had to do some other things, so sorry about that. We are going, I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 6:50. If everybody could join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with routine and justice for all.
Okay. Next item is adjustments, and we do have one adjustment. We have Kelly Foley is going to present the 2026 Travel Abroad Proposal. We're moving her from the first item on J to right after public comments. Do we need to vote?
Yep.
I make a motion to accept the recommendation.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you, Amy. All in favor? All in favor. Much appreciated. Okay, moving forward, approval of minutes. We have Monday, May 6th, 2024, executive session at 4:00 PM. Monday, May 6th, executive session at 4:30 PM. And Monday, May 6th, executive session at 5:30 PM. We have Monday, May 6th, regular meeting at 6:00 PM. We also have Monday, May 20th, 2024, executive session at 4:15. Monday, May 20th, executive session at 5:15. And Monday, May 20th, regular meeting at 6:00 PM. Recommendation to approve the minutes as presented.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you very much.
I second.
Thank you, Amy. I know Jen is abstaining, okay? All in favor? All in favor. Next item is public comments.
This evening on our agenda is a public comment opportunity for ESEA. Public comment on the plan that was been worked on and was presented at our last meeting. So that is open for any public comment. Sarah, are there anybody? And no one here for that, so.
Can I just ask a question? What does ESEA mean? Is it an acronym? Thank you. That's all I needed.
So no public comment?
Moving forward, Kelly Foley.
Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Kelly Foley. I'm a teacher and coach at Sanford High School and the advisor of the SHS Travel Abroad Program. For those who may not have heard of us, in 2021, we officially launched our program that plans to offer one travel abroad opportunity per year to the senior class during their February vacation, which is when the least amount of extracurricular activities are occurring, so there's the least amount of conflict. We are partnered with EF Educational Tours, which is a Massachusetts-based educational travel company, and they've been in business for about 60 years. We have now taken two successful trips abroad. We went to Italy in 2023 with 72 folks, and we just wrapped up Greece in 2024, where we took 75. France is scheduled for 20, oh, sorry, 2024. France is scheduled for 2025, and I currently have 84 signed up for that trip. For each tour, we have filled two large buses of seniors, of chaperones, some parents as well, and we hope to continue this for years to come. EF continues to be a fantastic partner in this undertaking. Their years of experience, the 24/7 emergency support, their liability insurance and more, provide me with so much confidence from start to finish in planning and executing these trips. But also, from a traveler's standpoint, there is an option to enroll in monthly or manual payments, which make these opportunities more financially accessible. And even more so, what's included in the trip is fantastic. You have flights and hotels, all of on-the-ground transportation, breakfast and dinner daily, lunches when we're out exploring kind of the local cuisine. We also get one personal tour director per bus, which that person is with us the moment we land in the airport to the minute we take off and head home. So we also have entrances to many excursions, a lot of kind of skip-the-line passes, and other several location-guided tours by expert local guides. So tonight, I hope to receive approval for our fourth SHS Abroad destination, which will take members of the class of 2026 over to Europe. By gaining approval tonight, I'm able to launch the trip the first week of school, which then allows travelers more time for planning and payments, and therefore lower monthly costs. So they'll get approximately 17 months to pay off this trip. I ask that you again keep this location and any hints about this destination completely confidential. The junior class will find out their location the very first week when they have their class meetings with their advisors, with our administration, et cetera. So if you review the packets that I've placed in front of you, on the left-hand sleeve was the official proposal for the destination. It also includes elements of our partnership with EF, our safety opportunities, really everything that shows that EF is such a strong partnership to keep. And then on the right-hand side of your folder, that sleeve is the official EF kind of brochure, where you can look at something very similar to what our trip is going to look like. Something I do want to point out is, as prices and inflation continue to rise, EF is no different. This price has gone up compared to years past, but they have added some new kind of financial opportunities or adjustments to continue making these changes accessible to our students. EF provides a $200 discount for families. It was originally if they signed up in the first 24 hours, which can be really stressful and pressuring for families. So they have actually extended that 24-hour offer to two weeks. So if families sign up in the first two weeks, they get $200 off automatically on their trip. Additionally, they have what's called a risk-free enrollment period, which is where in that two weeks after signing up, they can then cancel and receive any deposits back. So if they change their mind two weeks after enrolling, they get every dollar back, including their deposit. Additional opportunities include large group discounts, which if we continue the rate we've been going by filling two buses, we will also qualify for a group discount, which is another $100 or so off for each traveler. And then, of course, we're continuing to look at fundraising opportunities and even more scholarship opportunities for our travelers. In the first two years, it was a lot of kind of survival-based fundraising, but now that we've got a better footing and foundation, we're really looking for more creative ways to provide these opportunities for our students. So again, the hope is that upon approval, we'll roll out this location to juniors the first week of school. Then shortly after, we host a parent information night. And again, it would allow for a 17-month period for students or families to pay and fundraise for this trip. So I can open the floor up now for any questions you might have that hopefully don't reveal the destination, the number of cities, the cost, et cetera.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
No questions?
No? Okay. Feedback? Jen?
I just think it's really exciting that you're allowing the extended time to prepay. I think that I'm hopeful that that is going to reach a greater demographic within our student population. I'm hopeful that with that, we can be chatting with our students who maybe traditionally don't enter our workforce right at 15, maybe encouraging them to make that a goal, so that, you know, if they don't have the means to be able to do this as a family unit, it might be something that they can work on on their own. My feedback pertaining to fundraising is that I struggle with that at a school level. So we do a lot of fundraising at the school level to meet our basic needs. We fundraise for, you know, things that we wish we could provide, like warm-ups for athletics, you know? And so I would like to deep dive more into what fundraising looks like, because it's such a small number of kids for a really extravagant experience, which is incredible.
Yes. I see what you're saying, though. It's not one of those kind of.
But we are a limited community in our ability to raise funds. So I think that we need to make sure we're giving thoughtful consideration to when, how, and why we're fundraising.
Sure.
Couple things. You might have mentioned this, Kelly. Two areas that I think would be helpful, because you've done these previously and they've been very successful. Do you want to, I guess, three things now that I think about it. One, if you could kind of talk about the safety piece, right? Even though, because I think that's something that, from a superintendent point of view in school committee, that's important. Also, the trip here, without us revealing it, is it a trip that has already been in place by EF?
Yes.
So this isn't something that's customized? It kind of goes along with the safety?
Yes.
That this is not something that is new, or in terms of looking at that? And then I forgot my third one.
If it comes back to you, I'll answer the first two.
Yeah.
So the trips that I select from are essentially canned trips, specially designed by EF. They have numbers of them based on continent, country. You can customize trips, but really what they have is fantastic. Customizing trips adds more cost, and I think what they have is really well done. And when choosing trips, there are a ton of testimonials from travelers who have done it before. And then I have my own personal consultant at EF that just works on helping me decide what trips. We talk about things like how much time is on a plane, how much time is on a bus, you know? What's the weather like on the ocean if we're supposed to take some kind of, you know, transportation that way? So all of these trips have run multiple times. If EF ever makes adjustments, they're minor, based on like a daily excursion from their own feedback. For example, when we went to Italy in 2023, there was a tour that wasn't getting a ton of positive feedback from their travelers, so they pivoted and found a new excursion, and it was, in our opinion, the best part of the trip. It was our day trip to Marano, Enmarano, which was really cool. So all of these are really well researched, and they often go through the same hotels repetitively, so they have really strong relationships with tour guides, hotels, transportation companies, all of that. And then in terms of safety, EF provides insurance, so that if, you know, someone were to sprain an ankle or to get sick, and it was really upped when it was, when COVID was much more prevalent, making sure that there is support at all times for our travelers. But also EF has a policy where for every six travelers that enroll, a chaperone is added. So we have a really strong six-to-one ratio of chaperones. And we spend a lot of time leading up to the trip with our staff chaperones and our groups getting to know each other, getting familiar with each other, but also preparing for what it's like to be a traveler. Anything from being a considerate plane mate or roommate to being aware of where your wallet and pockets are at all times. So we really like kind of stretch the gamut of things to prepare for, for safety as well.
And I think in the packet, you have some testimonials from some of your other trips, too.
Yes.
So I think this is, I think that's important to know that this has been done previously, continuing to use EF and do that because of how it's been so well-received and done well.
And after each trip, so obviously I've only done two, but this is the plan, I send a traveler feedback survey for students, a parent traveler feedback survey, and a non-traveler parent feedback survey, because I want to continue making this as exciting, seamless, and informative as possible. So I'm continuing to collect data, for example, on how many students are paying for the trip on their own, how many get assistance from families. I look at how much fundraising students are taking advantage of, and if after the trip they wish they did or did not get more involved. And then asking for students' advice and parent advice on communication, on planning roommates and groups. It's a pretty lengthy survey that I organize a meeting for, so that they sit and really focus on providing feedback on individual excursions for EF, but then also overall SHS Abroad experience for me and chaperones.
And I would just add that I applaud you for that, that, you know, that follow-up work that you do is like incredibly time-consuming, but important work for sustainability purposes. And I think everyone agrees that it's an awesome opportunity. And just looking at your data, looking at 30%, which is a pretty significant number of travelers, you know, they just paid for it on their own. And like, you know, one thought that comes to my mind, I love to think of fundraising ideas, is, you know, building it much like colleges do, where you have alumni parents, like families and participants, who might just contribute to like a general coffer, so then you can then maybe have a scholarship application.
Absolutely.
And that's less fundraising, you know what I mean, out of your direct community, and more solicitation of funds from those who have had positive experiences and want to pay it forward.
Love that. Yeah, that's a great idea.
Do you want to say something?
I would just say that, sorry, that's really close. Yeah, thank you. Because, you know, my son went on it, had phenomenal time, so excited that he went. Your daughter, you've gone, you've gone on it yourself, and it just, thank you for bringing it to Sanford.
I wanted to piggyback on what you said, Jen, about the process that Kelly goes through afterwards with the surveys and everything. Excuse me. But also, in the beginning, that whole year before the, before you actually go on the trip, it's a huge learning experience. It's not just, okay, here are the tickets, and we'll take off and go. I mean, you go through the process of teaching them about being, you know, a citizen away from your country, going to another country, and, you know, the respect that it takes, and the safety, and just the wanting to open your mind, and all of it. Everything from what to pack, what not to pack, what to eat, like, everything. And it's such a great learning experience as a whole.
Yes.
So thank you. Thank you, thank you.
And two other things I'd like to add. I've been really fortunate to have some fantastic chaperones, and fantastic chaperones willing to go more than once. So as we continue doing these trips, the more experienced the chaperones are, the more positive experience is for our travelers as well. And then one more element to Jen, what you were saying is, this really does try to encourage kids to enter the workforce and start saving and managing money as quickly as we can. We also have parent information meetings that talk about how to handle money overseas, what are you going to do about your cell phone plan, all things that you really should be focusing on before you travel. But we're also hoping that as this trip continues to build, kids know it's coming. So it's not just me reaching out to the freshman or sophomore class, being like, hey, by the way, go get that worker's permit. I hope that students anticipate it and start saving earlier. Because something I like to encourage my students to do is, if you ever have a birthday or you come into some holiday money, you can put it down payment on your EF trip, and then it lowers that monthly cost. So finding ways, and so many strategies to continue to make it more affordable, but the sooner kids start anticipating this trip and planning for it. My goal is to make it a less daunting experience for them.
I have a question. How early can you raise your hand, I guess, since you're saying that? Like, can you, as a, you know, in a lower class, say, hey, I don't care where we're going, I'm going, like, or is it, is it just?
It's only available for the senior classes.
Yep.
But I launch it to juniors. But really, when you reveal the location, you give parents a week or two then to save the information night, and that's when they sign up for it. So if a student freshman or sophomore year is like, I am going, I'm just kind of like, awesome, can't wait to launch the trip.
Like, go get a bank account.
Yeah.
Go get a bank.
Right. Get a job, start saving now, yeah. But they're, really, the opportunity to enroll is that first month of September, so that they can immediately start jumping into those payments.
Excellent.
But I would say to your point, like, the freshmen, if they know, like, you have an incoming freshman, right? So if they know that when they're a senior, they can go on their trip, they could technically start saving.
Yeah.
In a bank account, right?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Just not through AF.
Yeah, not through me, but yes.
Right. I would say just encouraging them to get that bank account.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, get yourself a separate little pool that you're putting half your money in or whatever.
Yes. So I've been lucky enough that I've always had, or almost always had, a class advisor interested in joining the trip, too, so they know the class really well. But they also have all the students on one Google Classroom. So I've been in keeping, keeping in touch with them, too, asking them to send out little blurbs to the students on the classroom, reminding them that this stuff is coming up as well. So we're trying to up that communication in advance, too, for the kids who don't know about it.
Okay. So recommendation to approve 2026 Travel Abroad destination as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Melissa. Amy?
Love to second it.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor? All in favor. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Kelly.
I can come collect the documents.
Have a great, have a great summer.
I did, I didn't realize how after I wrote on this. It's for you, Joel. I do like that. I love that. Thank you so much.
Now run out of here before we decide to have you stay. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to communications.
Sure. Couple things to announce this evening. We did, oh, my glasses. There they are. Okay. All right. Couple things. We did receive word from the main Department of Education Child Nutrition staff that they will be conducting a Summer Food Service Program Administrative Review on-site this summer. So they're going to be doing that this week, during the week of July 22nd. And that process includes that visit to monitor the program operations, a review of overall sponsor administration of the Summer Food Service Program, and a review of the Summer Food Service Program claims for reimbursement. So we do have that on the docket coming to let us know, and our school nutrition director, David Boger, is ready for that. Also, received information from Wendy Anders, who is from Sweetser. You might have seen this in the news recently, with that in terms of their school clinicians in public schools. They, Sweetser is making some adjustments to their school-based program to help temporarily stabilize it due to lack of state support on their financial losses for the program for that. So they have identified a few school districts for either a reduction or freezing of any new hires. And so the Sanford School Department is one of those districts where they are looking at the freezing of any new hires. Presently, as the school year ended, we had three Sweetser clinicians working in our Sanford schools. We have one at the middle school, one at Margaret Chase Smith, and one at Carl J. Lamb. And so I think at one time, it was our hope that we'd be able to expand those. As we did go through our budget process, you know that we did put in resources, because we knew that that had been problematic. And so I think that speaks to being a wise decision on our part, because Sweetser is, will be unable to be able to expand those services, or in our case, come back to fill what we'd originally had at one time and wanted. So just, I know that's been in the news with that. We've received some questions about that. So right now, ours are going to be freezing. We are also, in addition to having our own social workers, in addition, we also are looking out for other resources as well, other service agencies. We have made a, reached out to Spurwink to see if there's going to be also any resources there, because the challenges that we're facing in that area of mental health are increasing, and we want to make sure we have all the resources that we can. So right now, the word we received from Sweetser was they were not going to be able to expand into those positions.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to committee reports.
Sure. Special Education Advisory Committee met last month, and one of the things we did at that meeting was an overview of the main Department of Education audit of our special education department. And so we gave an overview of that. We had 100% rating on 71 indicators for each total, for each student file. With that, it did very well with a number of those. Some of the takeaways that we had were, our special ed administration will be able to use these audit results to derive the professional, drive the professional development for the upcoming school year. In some of the areas where we were below 100%, they were subjective areas versus procedural. So for example, meeting mandated timelines versus writing a present level of performance for us. Those are areas where it is very subjective, also going against what is trying to rate that as being procedural. We also identified a gap many of the IEP's functional goals for speech and language and PT and OT-related services in that area. So there's ways to improve that in our goal development and related service providers. So overall, doing pretty well in terms of where the audit was. As most schools are, we're on the corrective action plan to be able to have those areas addressed, so feeling pretty confident about that. Kudos to the special ed department and all the work that they did preparing for that audit. Also, at the Special Ed Advisory Committee, we tried to look ahead to planning for next year, and so it's been a very productive advisory committee. We really look at some of the things that are on the horizon for the work of the Special Education Advisory Committee. There is work based on changes that have been put in place for the population of 18-year-olds to 22-year-olds. So that's an area that we've identified that I don't think we need the whole Special Education Advisory Committee dealing that. We're looking to have a subcommittee in that area to focus on 18- to 22-year-olds. We also know that there's, coming down the pike is services for three- to five-year-olds in terms of the Child Developmental Services challenges, as the state is looking to transfer that over to school departments. That's going to be important. That's going to be a lot of work that we want to be able to be prepared and ready for. So we're going to have a subcommittee in that area. And then we'll also be looking at professional development, as how we can continue, as mentioned in the audit, to be able to help with planning for that, but also knowing that the challenges that have risen around student behavior, that would be an area that I think we really want to dig into at a deeper level with subcommittees. So I think you'll see subcommittees meeting monthly in the fall, and then we'll probably do a late fall, early winter check-in to be able to see how things are. So that is an update from the Special Education Advisory Committee.
Okay. Thank you. There's a lot of work you guys are doing in that. Superintendent's reports are next.
Sure. So we'll look at, last week, we did release the June edition of the Sanford Spotlight. So as Sarah brings that up, I'd like to give that, give an overview to that. You also know that as part of my report, trying to give an end of the 2024-2025 school year recap. And so a lot of the end of the school year is captured in the Sanford Spotlight. Leading it off would be Sanford High School's graduation, their 131st commencement ceremony that took place Wednesday, June 5th. The weather was challenging and didn't really cooperate, so we pivoted and moved the ceremony from Alumni Stadium into Partners Bank Gymnasium. And kudos to our students. And everyone who is associated with the graduation went off very well, in everything from our speakers that were involved as part of that. So I think we do many things very well here in Sanford, but I think I would put our commencement ceremony up against anyone's in terms of being able to look at how that was done. So congratulations to our class of 2024 for that. Also here, we can go past the vote, because remember, this was sent out last week. So the vote was this past Tuesday, and I'll be talking about that shortly. Sanford Middle School had their JMG program and closing ceremony at the end of May, and that's a great, we love the JMG program, because a lot of it is really student-driven. A lot of that, you get to see students being put into leadership positions. So that was an opportunity to celebrate all that they did and the impact that they had this past year. So kudos to our JMG program at the middle school. Carl J. Lamb did something for the first time at the beginning of June. They held their own first-ever, Carl J. Lamb's own Special Olympics event. And I wasn't able to go, but I think, as I heard from others, it was an awesome event in terms of, especially for the first year doing it. I think it's going to be something you can see that that's going to continue into the future. Big thanks to Catherine McCall and PE teacher Tatiana Waldebeck for their ability, for their help in organizing that. Also, since our last meeting, SRTC held their recognition ceremony. meeting, SRTC held their recognition ceremony. And that's the honor of their achievements. That was also originally going to be outside, but moved inside to Partners Bank Gymnasium with that. So excellent job there. Going around our schools, Margaret Chase Smith had their field day, which also was a big success towards the end of the year. Over at Carl J. Lamb, Mrs. Nyland's fourth graders performed skits on the American Revolution for staff and students with that. And at Sanford Middle School, as part of their career units, eighth-grade students were challenged to conduct interviews in their career field of interest. And there's Gianna and Matea. They had the opportunity to talk with Captain Brooks from the York County Sheriff's Office. And over at Sanford Pride, they also had a special fourth-grade concert in the music room with that. So all of our schools with those articles as part of the Spotlight will allow you to click on and go see their own individual newsletters, which has a lot more information. Sanford High School's JMG program was not to be undone by the, outdone by the middle school. They also had their celebration as well, end of the year on Tuesday, May 21st, held in the Performing Arts Center. There's a picture of a pretty full stage in terms of looking at that. So great job there. Margaret Chase Smith School finished out our elementary concerts in terms of both the art show and their concerts, tying that also in with their fourth, fourth-grade promotion ceremony. SRTC also had, in the Health Occupations Program, they had their pinning ceremony at the end of May. And that recognized the students who have completed their certified nursing assistant program with that. And they were able to have someone that they selected, the students selected, to be able to help pin them with their CNA. So another excellent event there. Kudos to Haley Frankkor. She was named the Outstanding New Music Educator at the State Conference at the University of Maine. And that's great. That was something to recognize all of what Haley's done in terms of our instrumental music offerings at the high school, as well as the marching band. As always, we try to feature the great work happening at the Sanford High School through the Spartan Times. And so that has an article there where the National Art Society students participated in a community outreach day of caring as they were able to help out at the Trolley Museum in Kennebunk. Also want to recognize SRTC Director Matt Peterman as he received the Friend of the Sanford Backpack Program Award at their Chocolate Benefit Spectacular at the end of May. We also, towards the end of the school year, were able to dedicate the library at Margaret Chase Smith School after longtime Sanford educator Sharon Remick. That was an excellent ceremony, very well attended by Sharon's family, as well as past colleagues and friends, done through the Sanford Schools Legacy Foundation. Also just a few things that are in our Spotlight, continuing to show you a community resource guide, also about the Sunbucks Grocery Aid for low-income families this summer, and our summer meals program showing that is also part of the Spotlight. We have a school calendar, the kindergarten registration information, as well as some other ways to connect, to see everything and all that's going on in the city of Sanford for that. I think we miss our student representatives. They do a much better job at giving that than I do. Also want to just mention, as far as end of the school year, in addition to the, what we talked about, after graduation, students, our seniors, were able to go through the project graduation. That went really well. I think almost 75% of our kids participated in that as they were down to Marlboro, Mass, be able to do that. So kudos to, that's a huge undertaking, but kudos to all of our volunteers and community support to allow that for our students. Also, last evening, we were able to attend the Sanford Community Adult Education graduation. And that was another outstanding ceremony as you were able to, students were recognized for all of their achievements in terms of scholarships. And a couple situations where students were able to receive awards that were just statewide awards, just singletons, just, you know, just something that is given out to one person, for example, for all that they were able to achieve. So an excellent ceremony there. Kudos to the, to those students, graduates, and their families, as well as all the staff and students who are able to help with that. So overall, very pleased with how the end of the school year ended in terms of all the different activities and events. That's a lot of hard work, a lot of things that go behind the scenes with that, but very pleased and very proud of all the work that's gone on there. Any questions or any other comments on any of the other end of the school year recap or activities?
No, I just want to say that Sanford Spotlight, all the links to the different newsletters, I think, you know, people don't always know. The middle school puts out what their activities are on that newsletter. You know, the activities going on are there. And the Spotlight puts it in one place. You just click the link that you need. So it's, that's a great resource.
Yeah, and we're trying to be able to have those links to share that back and forth, absolutely, to be able to see all that's going on, to stay up to date. Also, just want to breathe a sigh of relief and give a big thank you to the community of Sanford and our voters. We did hold the school budget validation referendum for the 2024-2025 school budget. That was held this past Tuesday. And I did receive from Sue Cody, the city clerk, that she gave the official certification and verification that there were 1,206 ballots cast on Tuesday. And how that broke down was there were 852 yeses, 346 noes, and eight blanks. So school budget passed. Very appreciative of that as we continue to have the support of our taxpayers. We know budgets are challenging in terms of what we're able to do to meet the needs of our students, but also trying to balance that with the needs of our taxpayers with that. So, and we had an increase in terms of the people coming out to vote. I know last year, we had just under 500 votes, and this year we had over 1,200 with that. And we were still able to have over 70% support with that. So I know, I want to superintendent give a big thank you to all of our stakeholders who are going out to vote, everything from our families, to our staff who live in Sanford and Springvale, and all of our other supporters of the schools with that. So I will be sending out, I just got this, the official word from Sue this afternoon. So we will probably be sending a big thank you out tomorrow to acknowledge that for. But good news for sure.
Thank you. Moving on, directors' reports. Mr. Bousier.
Good evening. The first thing I want to update you on this evening is our Stronger Connections Grant. If you remember, that was a three-year grant that we received from the Maine DOE last spring. And it was, we were late getting out of the gate with that we, because we had difficulty hiring behavior interventionists to work with this program. But just to remind you, the goal of this grant is to build positive relationships, to foster a school climate of respect, responsibility, and community, and to strengthen connections to promote engagement and success through positive behavioral interventions and support. And this grant work is focused at the middle school. This grant began, the work began in the middle of March. We were able to hire Kristi Richards to come in and work with the middle school staff one day a week. Through the spring, Kristi has surveyed students and staff on their experiences at Sanford Middle School. She's met with staff in groups to gather input and to build relationships with staff at the middle school. She reviewed student processes with staff members, spent time with administrators to understand the current practices. She's accessed and analyzed the behavior data and identified trends. She's also attended transition meetings that take place for students that go from grades four to five as a transition into the middle school. She's met, she's participated in some of those meetings where staff talked to each other about the transitions. She reviewed the school handbook and policies related to behavior and discipline. And working together with Ms. Leiden, the principal at Sanford Middle School, they have created a leadership team. And the leadership team has met a couple of times where they've developed norms, identified a purpose. They reviewed data and identified some emerging themes that they want to work on. In June, they met with the whole staff and sort of outlined, here's the data, here are the results we found. They once again broke into some focus groups and got some input on what they came up with. And in next week, I believe they're meeting on Tuesday next week, they're going to meet as a leadership team to formalize some goals and to develop some action steps as they move forward into next year. So kudos to Kristi Richards, who really done a lot of work with Ms. Leiden up at the middle school to sort of examine those current practices that are going on, to get some feedback from students and staff, to identify some steps moving forward, to build on the good work that's really happening up there. So really excited about that. Next, an update on the pre-K partnership grant with the YMCA. Last week, had the opportunity to meet with the Department of Education, the Early Learning Team, and we reviewed the contract for the grant. We did discover that the meals that were originally, we were hoping to be able to provide to free for the pre-K students at the YMCA, we were going to include them in our normal free and reduced lunch that we do for everybody. The Early Learning Team discovered that that, we can't do that right now. So what we have done to cover that is we have adjusted the budget of the grant to be able to cover that. So we are going to be able to provide meals. We're just going to have to pay for that out of the grant. And then there's continuously to work on how to make that happen because we feel like it should happen. So we're working on how to make that happen as we move down the road. Once we get the, losing my train of thought, sorry. Once we get the contract from the DOE, then we will be able to start expending funds for supplies, furniture with it. So it's really important to get that finalized. We have started to receive some applications. Parents that are interested in the program, they can submit their applications to the YMCA or the school department. We're working together to starting to develop those lists. We have reached out to all the students that were on the waitlist. The YMCA has reached out to the folks that they had on their list. And right now, we're waiting to get those back. But I anticipate sometime next week putting an advertisement out, just to let families know, hey, this is, we have some interest in that. In terms of our regular pre-K, we are pretty full. We have a slot or two in our school that we're working to fill, but we're pretty full. So we're, we're excited about that. The last thing for my agenda tonight was just an update on the Sanford School Nutrition for Kids and Teens this summer. Just a reminder that school department, we are providing free meals to students under the age of 19. Begins next Monday, and it runs through August 2nd. We will be providing meals, breakfast and lunch. Breakfast is 7:30 to 8:30, and lunch is 11:00 to 12:00 at all of our schools except for MCS, because MCS is not eligible. We'll be offering lunch at Carportier Park from 11:15 to 11:45. In Springvale, Pearly Ground, I guess we have a time for students that wake up a little later. Breakfast is from 8:45 to 9:15, and lunch is 11:30 to 12:15. And we're also providing lunch and breakfast at Curtis Lake Church and YMCA for folks there. Any questions on the agenda items that I had this evening?
I just want to, I guess I don't understand the Stronger Connections Grant work that you're doing, the data that you're gathering and stuff like that. So just, maybe not tonight, but in the future, just to understand that a little more.
Yeah, so the Stronger Connections Grant, Kristi Parent has done, her behavior interventionist at the elementary schools. She's done a lot of work to put systems in place at our elementary schools to support stronger climates and is also to support student behavior. So for instance, common building expectations for students, putting things to connect with students, for instance, check-in, check-out. So there's a system at the elementary school where students may check in with, with an adult, say, hey, how's your morning going? Everything okay? And then at the end of the day, they just check in, like, hey, how did your day go? Did you have a great day? You know, just that extra connection that takes a minute or two. So those are some of the strategies that Kristi is going to work with the middle school to build on the great things they're doing, to build that positive school climate and culture with that. So that's sort of the flavor. The plan is, I think, next fall to have them come and talk, to share some of the work they do. I just wanted to give you a heads up this evening, let you know, Stronger Connections Grant, what's that, what's going on with that? I just want to give you a brief update tonight for that. So. Good. Beth's report. Beth Lambert, Mr. Curriculum Director, is unable to be here tonight. She wanted me to have a brief update, summer PD for staff. There's over 27 offerings through our school department and the Southern Maine Regional Group in Southern Maine. So we have a collaborative with York County where Beth has worked with those curriculum directors to share professional development. And so there's 27 offerings, ranging from artificial intelligence to math book studies to literacy curriculums to safety care training. So pretty excited about that. And Beth has really done a nice job putting those opportunities together. And she also wanted me to mention that the spring testing window for our state assessment ended on Monday. And that, right now, is in the process with the DOE, is certifying those results and certifying, making sure we have the right kids on our reports. And so she'll be sharing that information in the beginning of the school year that we have with that. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving forward to, I can't see because I don't have my glasses on. Hold on, new business. Go ahead, Matt.
Sure. So next up under new business is Lafayette School. That's under the school, Sanford School Department's control. That was something that even though we closed Lafayette School a number of years ago, we've held on to that. It was very helpful in COVID in terms of, we helped our partnership with the YMCA utilize that space to help working with students. And then we also knew, as we saw the increase, the potential increase in student population, especially last year, at this time when we were getting, there was a large number of new Mainers joining the Sanford community and into our school department. We were trying to be able to say, do we want to hold on to Lafayette School so that we can be able to make sure that it would be needed in case there was that crush in terms of increase in student enrollment? We did utilize that as far as having some partnerships also with some community groups looking to use that. We worked closely with the city. We did have, we do have two, we had two groups in there, one continuing, but the shelter program, who was in there this past year, is not interested in returning. So as we looked at that, and also knowing it from the school department's perspective, knowing that right now we don't have the enrollment needs, or at least the short-term enrollment needs that we saw or we were concerned about, and also looking at, knowing that these, not going to be, the shelter program not wanting to continue, and knowing that that's really not the purview of the school department. As we look at that, we don't see that there's any need for Lafayette School to remain in the school department's control. So that was something we've been discussing at leadership team meetings with the city. The challenge with that is, and it's a two-step process. We have to first of all, vote and approve to return the Lafayette building back to the city's care. And then the city also has to be able to then accept, to receive that back. And the challenge that we have right now is obviously the timing of this is not ideal in the sense of budgetary situation. So as we've met with the city, we're going to be working on continuing to dig into the numbers behind that in terms of operating that, the Lafayette School, in terms of what that facility and what those costs are, and being able to share that information with the city to help them and help us continue to be able to work together. From our standpoint, I think it makes sense for us to take action on this this evening, that I don't think, from our standpoint, it makes any sense for the school, for the school department to be able to continue to hang on to that as we look at that going forward. I do know that one of the challenges initially of why we were looking at closing Lafayette School, Lafayette School was a wonderful school, wonderful school. Magic happened there. Day, I remember, if you're having a bad day, go to Lafayette because it would cheer you up as you saw what happened. But at the same time, for all of the magic that was happening, the facility of Lafayette as an elementary school was really inequitable as you looked at that, especially in comparison to our other elementary schools. So it's a wonderful school, from an equity standpoint. So, it's a wonderful school, from an equity standpoint, we wanted to make sure that we have Carl J. Lamb Elementary, Sanford Pride Elementary, Margaret Chase Smith Elementary, all of those are lined up to be pre-K through grade four, and you're going to see very, in terms of resources, very consistent resources and no inequities there. So, even if we did have to have to use that on a long-term basis for Lafayette, I don't think it would pass that test for us to be able to do that. So, for those reasons, it's my recommendation to return Lafayette School to the care, custody, and control of the city of Sanford.
Yeah, I accept, or...
I make a motion.
Yeah, there we go, I can't even, it's too late, yeah.
I make a motion, too.
I make a motion to return Lafayette School to the care, custody, and control of the city of Sanford.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All in favor.
And thank you, we will be working on putting those financials and that together, because I want to make sure that we can, I appreciate the relationship we have with the city, and we'll continue to be able to work hard so that that can be done in a way that's going to not, we'll be able to do our best to be able to manage that. Next up, under new business, is usually at this meeting, we start to talk about the meeting schedule for the 2024-2025 school year. And so, we've got that up on the screen. The schedule that you have here for 2024-2025 is very similar to the format that we used this past year. Sanford School Committee meetings will be held September through June on the 1st and 3rd Mondays of each month. We'll always try to start at 6:00 PM in the chambers here. The second meeting of the month will usually be a school committee meeting workshop, and that's what we utilize for many of those meetings this year, topics to be determined. I thought that worked very well. Sometimes, the first Monday in a month is a holiday, and if that's the case, we usually will go back to the second Monday of that month. We've also learned that over time, it always helps to have an August meeting as well. So, we're looking at, in this schedule, a Monday, August 26th meeting. That one is usually at 4:00. And then, we also will meet the two Mondays following Labor Day in September. That's where we're really focused on the opening of school. And then, when we move into October, we then go into 1st and 3rd, same thing in November and December. January, we do run up against the Martin Luther King Day holiday for the 3rd Monday in January. We move that back to the end, that usually lines up pretty well with our budget work. And then, February, we'll meet the 1st Monday, and then, the last Monday in February is usually one that we use to meet, to approve the budget that will be passing on to the city council. And then, back in March and April and May, we're back to the 1st and 3rd. Once again, in June, we will meet the 2nd Monday in June typically, because that 1st Monday, we usually go up against senior awards night and graduate, and game night. So, that's something that we've tried to have one meeting in June and place it right there after graduation. So, that's a draft, just looking at any feedback from the school committee in terms of any changes or recommendations. If not, we can use this as a, we can vote to approve the school committee meeting schedule for 2024-2025.
I make a recommendation to, I mean, I make a motion to approve the recommendation of the school committee's schedule as presented.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor.
The next item is, we just recently settled a contract, a three-year contract with our teachers and our ed techs, and so, to align with that, this evening, we have three separate items to approve, also three-year contract extensions for Business Administrator Cheryl Fornier, three-year contract extension for Assistant Superintendent Steve Bussier, and a three-year contract extension for myself. And we did meet earlier in executive session to really dig into those areas.
I make a motion to approve the school committee, no, to approve three-year contract extension for Business Administrator Cheryl Fornier, for Assistant Superintendent Steve Bussier, and for Superintendent Matt Nelson.
So, discussion? Oh, yes. I just wanted to give a comment before we moved on to the actual ratifying. I just want, I want everyone to know that the work that goes into approving contracts on behalf of the school committee is thoughtful, and it includes healthy dialogue, oftentimes with differing viewpoints of school committee members. And I think that that's a really important thing for the public to know, that as we receive contracts, this was a heavy contract year, that there is a lot of thought that goes into them. It's not paperwork that we receive and that we just approve, and we sign our names to. With that being said, the three contracts that we will be approving tonight, I can say wholeheartedly are within budget, and the rates that we have approved are comparable and competitive with area schools. So, I just want to give kudos to the school committee, because the contract work can be extensive, and oftentimes can be, you know, just, just really time-consuming. And although I think we all would like it to go a little bit quicker, I think we need to appreciate the time that it does take, because it validates the fact that we really do do the work to ensure that these contracts are not only in the best interest of those that we employ and we want to retain, but also for our taxpayers.
Well said, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I second the motion to...
Oh, I thought that I did the motion. So, you want me to do it again?
Sure.
That's why I was like...
We probably should do all three separately.
You want to do all three separately?
Yep.
Okay, I make a motion to approve a three-year contract extension for Business Administrator. Cheryl Fornier. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor. I make a motion to approve a three-year contract extension for Assistant Superintendent Steve Bussier.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor. And I make a motion to approve a three-year contract extension for Superintendent Matt Nelson.
I'll second that.
Thank you, any discussion? All in favor? All in favor. Thank you very much. Moving forward, no old business to discuss, and next item is resignations and retirements.
Sure, some resignations and retirements to announce, as it's the end of the school year. Jillian Gare, art teacher at Sanford Pride Elementary, Sarah Preston, school counselor at Sanford High School, Hillary Dagel, kindergarten literacy ed tech at Carl J. Lamb, Alan Parman, second shift custodian at Pride, Mason Resendis, second shift custodian at Pride, John Murphy is retiring as a second shift custodian at Sanford Middle School, Sasha Crawford, kindergarten teacher at Sanford Pride Elementary, Keith Gendron, 7th grade math teacher at Sanford Middle School, Rebecca Riley, ed tech 2 at Margaret Chase Smith School, Nicole Tibbetts, head custodian at Margaret Chase Smith School, Ellen Murray, IEP 504 coordinator at CJL, and Jenny Mace, ed tech at Carl J. Lamb. Jean and Ellen are both retiring, want to thank them for all of their years of service to the Sanford School Department, and wish them all the best of luck as they move on to retirement. And also, a number of our, also people on the list, we have some of them who are moving to other teaching positions in other parts of the state. We have other people who are moving to different areas, and we have some who are moving from education into a different profession, or back to a different profession, back into the private sector. So, wishing all of those people the best of luck in their future new endeavors. Couple of appointments to announce, these are the building teacher leader appointments. Carrie Nyland at Carl J. Lamb, Kathy McCall for special ed, teacher leader at Carl J. Lamb, Brooke Termini at Sanford Pride Elementary, Dan Fernandez Phelps at Sanford Pride Elementary, and Trish Hossi at MCS is building teacher leader for special education there. Also have some athletic stipends to announce. Nick Works, assistant football coach at the high school, Anthony Nugent, freshman football coach at the high school, a first-team football coach, Brady Parker, assistant first-team football coach at the high school, Nate Smith, the cross-country coach for the high school, Lindsay Strout is the assistant cross-country coach, Rossi Kirsten is the golf coach, Marty Kane is the head field hockey coach, Kaylee Frye is an assistant JV field hockey coach, Bill Puffer, boys' head coach, soccer coach at the high school, Tim Cole, boys' JV soccer coach at the high school, Dave McCall, girls' high school, girls' varsity soccer coach at Sanford High School, Taylor Tar is the girls' JV soccer coach, Katrina Woodard is the fall cheerleading coach at the high school. Yeah, the other top two are repeats. Also, Ryan Geary has been hired as the varsity girls' volleyball coach. With that, he was the JV coach last year, Ruby LeChant, 7th grade field hockey coach, Erin Fraser, 8th grade field hockey coach, Diana Allen, 7th and 8th grade cross-country coach, Vicky Thomas, 7th grade girls' soccer, Amanda Roy, 8th grade girls' soccer, Nate Mann, 7th grade boys' soccer, Keith Gendron, 8th grade boys' soccer, and Josh Allen as the athletic liaison. Also, as I mentioned, a couple that went after the agenda, remember, this was for our initial meeting on Monday, that we were not able to, had to postpone due to our varsity girls' tennis team being in the regional championship, which is a good reason to propose, and congratulations to our girls' tennis team. But, in addition, Ryan Geary, as I mentioned, would be varsity volleyball coach. And we've also had another change, Mike Fallon has resigned as varsity football coach, looking to interim coach, at this time of the year, we're looking at placing, having an interim head coach, that'll be Mark Buzzino, as we look at that. And Mike Fallon will be nominated also to be an assistant principal at Sanford High School for the 2024-2025 school year. Also, a couple of staff transfers to announce. Sarah Mills is moving to an ed tech 2 position at Carl J. Lamb, and Tim Legere is moving to a multilingual learner teacher at Sanford Pride. And that's a new position that was in the budget. And then, as far as our nominations back in May, we had missed Shaylin Gagnon, so I am going to recommend that the school committee vote to continue her contract for a second-year probationary contract. Shaylin was, she came into that position after someone had left during the school year. So, that's where, as it came back, she was with us for the second half of this year. So, we are recommending her for a second-year probationary contract, and the school committee will need to take action on that this evening.
I make a motion to continue the contract of Shaylin Gagnon as presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor.
And a couple other new nominations for professional staff. Haley Kennedy as a grade 3 teacher at Sanford Pride Elementary, Ayla Aldrich is a grade 3 teacher at Margaret Chase Smith School, Connor Kilroy as a school counselor at Sanford High School, and Shonda Williams is the health occupations teacher at Sanford Regional Technical Center. I've had an opportunity to meet with Haley, Ayla, Connor, and Shonda, and I think they're going to be excellent additions to the school department, and I am excited to recommend to the school committee to accept the nominated professional staff as presented with one-year probationary contracts.
I make a motion to accept the nominated professional staff as presented with a one-year probationary contract.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor. Next item are policies and procedures.
Good evening again. I have three policies for you this evening for a second reading. They all have the same title, policy KBF-E2, which is the Title I Family Engagement Policies for CJL, MCS, and SPE. Previously, these were guidelines for parent and family involvement or engagement under Title I. As we move to a school-wide model, we need to elevate these to a policy, and so, that's why they are here for you this evening for a policy. The school involvement policies outline strategies to promote active parent and guardian participation in their child's education. The key elements of the policies are school parent compact, outlining shared responsibilities for academic success, opportunities for parents to be involved, such as volunteering or attending conferences, regular communication from schools about events and student progress, training and resources to help parents support their children's learning at home, and ensuring information and opportunities are accessible to all parents, regardless of language or disability barriers, and I recommend approval.
I make a recommendation to approve policies KBF-E2, Title I Family Engagement for CJL, MCS, and SPE as presented.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor. Thank you, Steve. Moving forward, items for future agendas, none, and...
I just wanted to touch upon, sorry, so I do. Matt sort of touched upon the special ed advisory committee that Melissa and I are on, and, you know, there was some discussion around discipline, and I do think that, you know, for next school year, and I know that administrators, obviously, discipline is something that is talked about a lot, but I think having a workshop in the next beginning of the school year over discipline, almost like a discipline 101, so that the community knows sort of the laws around discipline, especially in the younger generations, younger generations, I mean, like, pre-K to grade 5, but also sort of like, there's just a lot of legal stuff around what discipline can be done, and I think that it would be good for staff also to know that as well. So, I do think a workshop around discipline will be great, thanks.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, Amy. Just, we, the last day of school was this past Monday, and on Tuesday and Wednesday, we had administrative team meetings, both on Tuesday and Wednesday, as we were trying to reflect on the school year and start to begin the planning for next year and some goal-setting. And we've really started to dig into the behavior and discipline piece. So, I think that that makes sense. I think we're also probably looking at, something we've done similar in the past, is have a workshop where the school committee can also meet with the administrators in August as well. So, I think that will be a nice sharing of information, which I think can also help guide us going forward for future steps and other agenda items, for us to be able to continue to, to do work in that area.
I too have a future agenda item, next year's school calendar, the last day of school, I believe, is Tuesday, June 10th, and I would like to have a discussion around our snow day policy, building in potentially three snow days, and anything after that. Seeing what our options are, would be for a remote snow day, so that there's a definitive end of school year on Friday, the 13th.
I think not only parents, but staff would appreciate that.
Sure, yeah, I think that it makes sense in terms of how we can... Sure, yeah, I think that it, it makes sense in terms of how we can be able to... As you know, this year, um, we ended up having three, but it bumped us into Monday, the, the tenth, which I think is, is not ideal for anybody as you be able to look at that, so. Um, there's a lot of moving parts to that, but I think it would be wise to start that discussion early and try to be able to have that, get out in front of that, um, sooner rather than, uh, before the snow starts to fly.
And just to that point, my understanding is that graduation is on June fourth of next year? We got a confirmation from the peanut gallery. Thank you, Sarah. I love it.
Well, and I, I'll just add, the reason that I'm bringing that up is for, um, summer childcare. So it's difficult for, and you're bleeding over into another week for folks who are working to arrange that partial week childcare services. So I felt like this was a good kind of compromise. You know, we're starting school a little bit later. We've grown accustomed to getting out a little earlier, you know, and, um, we're going to get out on the tenth if we don't have snow days, and it still gives us the traditional snow day feel of three snow, snow days. Yeah.
Yeah. Everyone's knocking on wood here in terms of, uh, what we have for sure. Yep.
Anything else?
No, um, and there, as far as the calendar announcements, as we mentioned, this meeting was originally scheduled for Monday, so we had the, um, Community Adult Ed graduation that happened last night and the school budget referendum, um, this past Tuesday. So no calendar announcements for now.
Just for all the millions that are watching this meeting, we are down to Elsie Gendron as our student reps as we had to graduate. Um, anyone, um, students that would be done in the, in the fall, I'm assuming, that want to join us in September, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do our usual process, uh, right back there in the fall. Uh, it's, it's worked well that anytime Elsie would be able to hopefully continue, so there's continuity there. And then in this situation, we could probably make sure it's a junior and maybe also open up to seniors as well, uh, knowing that we could still have some of that continuity, um, for it. But yeah, we'll start that process, um, right as we get back, um, at the beginning of next school year.
Great. Okay, without further ado, recommendation to adjourn this meeting at eight oh three.
So moved. A second.
All in favor? All in favor? Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you for a great school year.